Call this public hearing to order. And to begin with, I'm going to ask Councilor Thompson to read the purposes of the hearing and the call to order. Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. The purpose of this hearing is to consider certain bylaws which, if adopted, shall amend the City of Grand Forks zoning bylaw number 2039. All persons who believe that their interest in property within the boundaries of the city is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the bylaw. The subject of this hearing, no one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. This hearing is open to the public, and all representations to council form part of the public record. A live video and audio feed may be broadcast and recorded by GFTV. All information, correspondence, petitions, or reports that have been received concerning this subject bylaw have been made available to the public. The correspondence and petitions received after May 22nd, 29th hearing, date of notification, and the form new today are available for inspection during the course of this hearing and are located on the information table in the foyer of the council chamber. Members of council may ask questions if they wish so. However, the main function of council members is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens or with each other at this hearing. Council debate on the proposed bylaws is scheduled to take place during the next regular council meeting after the conclusion of this hearing, June 10th, 2019. It should be noted, however, that for some items, a final decision may not be able to be reached at that meeting.
You know, nobody else can find out what's going on here because nothing's working except for what's in here, you guys. We should just call the whole thing off. It's bullshit.
Go ahead.
It must be emphasized that council will not receive any representation from the applicant or members of the public after conclusion of this hearing. During a public hearing, people sometimes become enthusiastic or emotional. Regardless of whether you favor or oppose any application or argument, please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion. Where strain enables others whose views vary, or pardon me, whose views may or may not coincide with your own, to exercise their right to express their views and have them heard in as impartial a form as possible. The corporate officer will affirm that notice of public hearing-
Okay, I can stop you there, Councilor. I'll take it from here that our corporate officer isn't here, but our communications officer is, and will speak to the issue of whether we've satisfied our public notifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as per the statutory requirements for public hearings, notice was advertised twice. That was the May 22nd and May 29th issues of Grand Forks. Also, a notification letter was sent out to property owners within 30 meters of the site. Copies of the newspaper ads and the letter that was sent are in your packages, as well as the two that are on display out in the foyer. And therefore, the statutory notification requirements for this public hearing respecting bylaw number 2039-K6 have been fulfilled.
The procedure on bylaw submissions. You have a brief description from planning. The applicant is not here. This is a third-party applicant format, and so we won't be giving 15 minutes for responses from the applicant. We're here to hear what people have to say. And we will call for comments of five minutes, and I have a long list here. People will start one at a time. And I will recognize delegates at the delegate table only, so please refrain from comments from the floor. Clearly state your name, residential address, which I have here, so we can remind you if you forgot. The speakers are limited to five minutes to present their remarks. At the discretion of the chair, there is an opportunity at the end, if everybody's been heard, for people to come back a second time. But we have a long list, so I can't make any guarantees in terms of returning a second time to the mic. Once the... Again, the next comment is about the applicant, which we're not going to use response time. Questions, and we don't need to go into that. Final call for submissions. At the very end, we're going to continue this until everybody has had an opportunity to speak. And we will call three times at the end, as we do for any last comments from anyone at the end of the hearing. Anyway, those are the rules, basically. But also, kind of, there are some people who may want to come into this room, and I'm expecting that people are here for a while, that they might open up and let someone from one of the other rooms come in and have a seat. But again, this is not the... The purpose of this is to give an opportunity for the speakers. And so, if you are feeling that you'd like to give an opportunity for someone-
Is there camera on? Is there microphones?
Go right ahead and do that. All right, let's open then with our first speaker this afternoon. Ms. Mayor.
Yes. Speaker 5B.
Yes?
That's just where I just need to give you a quick rundown before we get started on the correspondence that's been received thus far.
Oh, I... Okay, thank you. Would you read that?
Thank you. Apologies. Okay, so what we had said was, any written comments received prior to 12 o'clock today would be copied into the information packages. We have the two binders outside. Council has also received copies of all of that. We've had a couple of written submissions that have come in since, and during the course of the hearing, we will let you know what those are. I'll just do a verbal update. Having said that, thus far, before 12 o'clock, regarding the proposal to rezone lots A, B, C, and D in the 2000 block on 70th Avenue, we received 41 written submissions. Of those, one in favor, 33 opposed, and seven where the letter, to my reading of it, was either unclear, or they were... The indication was opposition to both 70th and 2nd. So that was your total there. We also had a petition delivered this morning at 10:00 a.m., and on that petition, there were 598 valid signatures, as per Section 82 of the community charter. The petition, again, is copied in your package, and it was specifically indicating that the signatories were against the use of 70th Avenue for this project. Of the 598 valid signatures, 488 were residents of the City of Grand Forks, 74 were residents of Area D, 10 were from Christina Lake, 3 from Greenwood. We had 5 that had no residential address listed, 2 duplicate names, signed twice, and 15 names where information was missing or street addresses were incomplete, enough that I couldn't make a guess as to what the intent was. So that's your 598 on the petition.
Thank you very much, Councilor. All right, we can proceed with the first speaker. Clayton, could you come up to the delegation table and introduce yourself? You've got five minutes, and you'll see that we're running our clock on this.
Yep.
Our minute clock. You know, if you could try and keep to that and set a good example for the group as this-
You have a statement, I'll go.
Great.
And just touch the big blue button.
Chris, can you help him?
No, you're good.
Okay. I live at 5775 Bee Gees Street. I'm opposed to both rezoning there and 2nd Street. Coming from a community that has done this, we're going to increase the problem we have in this town. I moved here to retire and be done with the crap. There's some here, I'm working on it with other people to get rid of it. You guys are going to just increase the problem you have in this town. And I'll tell you, I moved out here to open a couple businesses. I sure... I'm going to wait to see what you guys do here, what's happening. If this is approved and this is the goal, when you rezone all this stuff, I guarantee I'm not here. I'm not going to follow my kids, they're under bikes to school and everything like that. There's absolutely no way. I just came from that. I'm not doing it again. And by rezoning this, with all the signatures and all the people and everybody that's here, nobody wants this stuff. So I don't see how you guys... I just moved here sharing you guys over the last couple of years have got to this point. But how it got here, by all the people that I've talked to in town, and all the people that are here and signed it, it doesn't belong here. And it shouldn't be zoned. I'm good. There's lots more people that haven't written down because I forgot all the stuff I was going to say, but I'm good if somebody else hasn't written down.
Thank you very much, Clayton. And our next speaker that can proceed is Francis Allen. Good afternoon, Francis.
Good afternoon. My name is Francis Allen. I live at 2170 Bryson Place. I'd like to point out that the service amenities are not available on 70th Avenue. The city paid a large sum. If I'm correct, it was something like $800,000 for these four lots behind the new condos and behind my house. The cost to install for building this particular building that you're suggesting would cost the city and the taxpayer approximately $500,000 for the sewers and other such amenities, which is already in the downtown area, and B.C. Housing has already bought that land. You would put this facility right next to a very popular existing park, a newly constructed senior complex, low-income housing, and a new women's shelter where women have come with their young children to escape domestic violence. You would be putting this facility to a dense population populated area and exposing this population to the high-risk area for crime and drug exposure. We have already seen two home invasions or not more to happen because of this. Also, drug users would use this from other areas, not just drug users in our local Grand Forks community who would be sent here. The downtown areas are open from 9 to 5, and we are here 24/7, so we would have continual exposure to this. We, as taxpayers, will no longer be paying to the well-being of our town and community, but for the destruction of the town and we, its victims. It would do well to have a children's park built on these lots, one that would be a welcome asset to the young families who will be living in this new housing complexes. There is a skateboard park for early teens, a ballpark for the young and old, and next, wouldn't it be lovely to have a park for the very young, something to enhance our area and not to destroy it?
Thank you very much, Francis. The next speaker is James Cronken.
Hello, everybody. My name is James Cronken. I live at 7170 19th Street, just a block away from the proposed zoning address. I'm speaking in opposition today, and I previously had a written submission. I sent an email to all the city councilors a couple of weeks ago, and I did get one response, thanking me for my submission. And I've since updated that submission. I sent that off this morning with the most up-to-date information to the best of my knowledge, and I urge you to reread that. Some of the points that I touched on in that written submission were the fact that putting this supportive housing on 70th Avenue will undermine the safety of women's transition house, safe house. I think I have a pretty good perspective on this, growing up in serving in social housing and having been the benefactor of being in a women's transition house when I was a young boy. Putting a facility like that near a transition house will absolutely not make the vulnerable people that need it want to go there. I don't know if I can make that clear enough to everybody in the room. Beyond that, the 70th Avenue location does not offer the proper services to the people that are going to be placed there. In particular, the people that that facility is targeted for are people with mental health issues and substance abuse issues. People with substance abuse issues that are seeking recovery and wanting treatment are treated by pharmacies in our local community, and the only pharmacy nearby there is at Extra Foods. Unfortunately, the pharmacy there is only open six days a week and no holidays. And for any of those people who start treatment programs, unfortunately, at the beginning of their treatment program, they must receive their medication every day witnessed by a pharmacist. They cannot receive it in multiple-day packages until they have graduated up to the second step of program. The only pharmacies in the community that offer this service are Save On and Pharmisave. Pharmisave is the only one that's also open most holidays. Placing the supportive housing facility up on 70th Avenue is forcing the people there to take a two-kilometer walk each day, each way, actually, four kilometers, in order to ensure that they can get their medications on weekends or holidays. That's putting a large barrier in front of people who already have willpower issues and mental health issues and possibly physical disabilities as well. You'd be doing a great disservice to those people, putting them far away from the services that they need. As well, to a lesser extent, but also important, is the legal aspect. In the Control of Drugs and Substances Act, I believe under Section 10(c) sub-3, it specifically states that courts must consider aggravating factors to people charged under those sections. And some of those factors include proximity to places frequented by people under 18 years of age. That means Dick Bartlett Park, right beside it. And if the intent is for the supportive housing facility to protect the people that are going to be placed there, putting them directly across from a park where they're going to be receiving a harsher criminal sentence if they're prosecuted criminally is doing them a disservice as well. I can tell you that after much deliberation, much talking with my wife, that if this is approved and the facility is put in on 70th Avenue, we won't be staying in Grand Forks to raise our family. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And the next, the person up is... Excuse me for a second. It is Al Oldson. You're up next. Okay. Al, the breakdown is not temporary. It looks like we've had a serious malfunction in our technical abilities, and so what we're asking is if we could rotate these people in and out of the room here so that we can get more of the people in waiting into the room on a periodic basis. So I'm wondering if some of the people after they've done could not move out of the room and let other people into it. That's a lot to ask, I know, but... Okay. Without any further delay, Mr. Oldson.
Thank you. I'm opposed to this development and all my concerns are falling heavily. First, many, the trust of city government. One of my main concerns in moving to a new community was a zoning. How effectively the local government upheld zoning regulations to be consistent with present use. I looked at the zoning for the area surrounding Bryson Place, felt comfortable with the zoning, which allowed single-family and some multiple-family area. Speaking with people I knew in Grand Forks, I was assured the local government upheld planning and zoning decisions. I therefore made my decision to invest my retirement into a home in Bryson Place. This council is now attempting to arrange everything which is planned for this area. To rezone and force housing does not conform to the present planning of the zoning as a direct slap in the face on every resident who bought and lives there. There are many areas in Grand Forks that are zoned to accommodate and is very sort of built within the zoning plan that was set aside in suitor for this development. If you wish future development in Grand Forks, there must be trust in government. Future investors will not trust you if they can't trust zoning. Secondly, health and safety in this community. A hard-to-house facility, it will be no barriers, no rules building, which undoubtedly will lead to expensive drug and other related problems. Grand Forks has already had extensive experience with crime problems that persons used in the previous Whistlers of Hope location down by the river. With an increase in number of being housed, this will only greatly increase these problems. This area already houses a women's shelter, a new low-cost housing project will undoubtedly have families housed within it. The adjacent area is a recreational ball-diamonds, swimming pool, arena, and skateboard park. All of these have young children in attendance. Building this proposed housing at this location will place all of the mentioned at risk. Health and safety being the greatest concern, but secondly, personal property of those living in the area also. Thirdly, physical responsibility. Council chooses to rezone and move this to 70th Avenue. The cost to the taxpayer will exceed half a million dollars, could even be much larger. The city would be left owning a property on 2nd Street, which has been on the market, I believe, for over three years with absolutely zero offers. While there are problems associated with this building on 2nd Street, it's already zoned or closely zoned for this purpose. Already owned by B.C. Housing will not cost the taxpayer for its development. Would not be fiscally responsible to spend tax dollars on this move. Fourthly, where the responsibility for this lies. Somehow, some members have repeatedly attempted to lay blame on this move to 70th Avenue with B.C. Building Corp. Let us be very clear. It is only you, the city council, that have the responsibility for this. This cannot go forward without your approval of the zoning of this area. By simply rejecting this zoning, the project cannot be placed in a residential area. Please maintain the zoning and planning that was originally designed for this area. And finally, where to place this development. It is always difficult to make decisions regarding these issues. Everyone has a reason not to explore them in their immediate area. However, I think it was best stated by Mayor Taylor at the May 21 House Meeting, when he stated he was not in favor of the development of 70th Avenue for the very specific reason that this area has already seen huge growth, and to further add to hard-to-house would lead to an unacceptable concentration of residential use for the area. All services that will enhance the life of the hard-to-house will be in the downtown area, to allow builders to assist them in using this facility. Medical support, food kitchen, potential for Whistlers of Hope to relocate to this area. However, I do not believe it has been shown that this community requires a building of this size. We have persons in need in this community which need not only be housed, but offer the support service that will assist them in improving their lifestyles. At this time, the community does not have the services required. Therefore, why would we build a structure which is far in excess of what's required by the community? We don't want people from other communities sent to our community when the resources cannot even adequately support the present needs. While B.C. Building states it will only consider two sites, 2nd and 7th, it's time for our government to tell them that we will not be dictated to. We do not allow bullying in our schools or workplaces. Why should we accept bullying by senior government corporations? If they wish to build in our community, then they must work with our local government to find suitable locations. I know that our citizens will support our local government in this, and if we must expect money to fight this in court, so be it. It is our community, and what is built here must be appropriate for our needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oldson. Our next speaker is Scott Davis. Mr. Davis.
You may as well know my feelings on this, as I interrogated that view on the 21st at the city council meeting. I have not changed my position in any way whatsoever. As a matter of fact, I'm more firm on that position than I was at that point in time. We put together a petition and took it out, and we received 598 signatures. We would have gotten more, but a lot of us weren't taking signatures from people from Christina Lake or Area D. The one thing that I found very alarming when I was canvassing and speaking to people that I'd never met before in the community, and I think I probably went to over at least 75 houses, and I'd say 30% of those households interrogated to me that they're living in fear, and they've never lived in fear up until the last few years, when things started to slide in our town and things were getting out of hand, and the crime was gone up, and we've got people that are in the community that are wreaking havoc for a lot of people. And these people that I spoke to have lived here for their lifetime. They've never locked their doors. They go out in the evening, they walk their dogs, they socialize here, there, and everywhere. They don't do that anymore. They're afraid to walk their dogs in the evening. They're afraid to go out in the evening. They lock their doors all day long. A lot of them don't even answer their door. That's not why we live here. We live in a small town of 4,000 people, and we all came here, excluding the people that have been here all their lives, simply for the simplicity of a small town and the quality that we enjoy in a small town, the lack of crime and the hustle and bustle of the cities. And now, we've got a proposition on the table that's going to bring all of that right here to our town and escalate the problems that we've experienced in the last few years. This is criminal to even think about this. The information that's out there, and I'm surprised you guys... I mean, you should have it. It's out there. I'm going to read you just a short article from the Times-Colonists out of Nanaimo. This was published on April 13th, 2019. On April 4th, a letter from Selina Robinson, B.C.'s housing minister, claims that there had been no increase in crime associated to 250 Terminal Avenue and 2020 Le Brue Road. She sent this letter to the liberal caucus. That's what she stated, no problems, nothing at all, everything was as normal. However, in Nanaimo RCMP, Superintendent Cameron Miller told Nanaimo Council on April 8th that the calls around the Terminal Avenue shelter had increased 66% from the correlation of one year previous to the timeframe that it had been there and established. 66%. And the service around the Le Brue Road Avenue, the crime and the calls, increased 150%. And as a result of this, the RCMP has put together a six-person task force to deal with the activity that is going on there that they've never experienced before. We can't even entertain the idea of that in this small town. We don't have the services to deal with a situation that will occur. And it's not if it occurs, it will occur. Okay? And it just needs to be thought of a lot more than you guys have given the thought too. Another problem I have is sort of misinformation, and I'm not going to say any names, but I mean, we have a councilor sitting at table, you know, and for a council- and for a council to go into a neighborhood of Bryson Place and try to convince the people there that they should change their mind and let it slide and let it go on to Seventieth Avenue, that's impurgable. It's bad behavior, and it should be called out. And the mayor is aware of it, and I don't believe anything has been addressed to that issue. But it's a conflict, it's a total conflict, and that kind of behavior is unacceptable. We pay a good portion of taxes in this town, and it seems to me we're getting less and less for the taxes we pay, and they're escalating every year. And our services are going down. We can't afford to deal with the problems that we have now. And we sure as heck ain't gonna be able to deal with it if you let this project come into our town. Thank you.
Mr. Davis. And our next speaker is Bernie Burkowski. Welcome, Bernie.
My name is Bernie Burkowski. I live up on Lineview Crescent. We moved here four years ago because my wife has an uncle here that we had visited a few times. And we absolutely loved the little town, nice and quiet, peaceful. And my wife and I always, since we've come visit here, discussed the fact that when I retire and she retires, that we'd like to move here. Now, this has been four years. I've worked very hard on picturing out my place. I have a huge backyard, fences to keep the deer out with a few gates. And since all this stuff started to happen around here in the last year and a half, I have seen nothing but people, very low-life people walking around on bikes, going into cul-de-sac, checking out the houses, what they can see. And the backyard, my backyard goes to the Canada, I think it's Canada Trail or whatever they call it, the old railroad. So I have people on bikes going by there, looking in everybody's backyard. Since then, I have put up lots, ready gate. I lock my vehicles, I lock my basement doors while I'm outside, and nobody's inside the house, which I never had to do in the beginning when we moved here. I don't know what you are planning on doing. All this I do is as a taxpayer, we pay every one of your wages. And for you, mayor, you don't even live in this district, and you have no right to vote for what you wanna do. I totally against anything that you people are trying to do. This is not why I moved here. I want to be left alone. I don't wanna worry about whether I have locked everything up, put everything out of sight, and that is no way done then. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bernie. The next speaker is Peter Dembski. Afternoon, Peter.
Hello. Hello. Um, I guess everybody can hear me okay. I've heard all the opposition and everything. I'm here to offer a solution. See, I've got a trailer park already that is a low-income housing trailer park up the north fork of the Grand Bay there. And everybody's sure probably familiar with it. I've had my run-ins with the law over it. I've been running it for 10 years. I know all about low-income housing people. And I'm offering to sell a chunk of my land, or basically I've subdivided it already, so basically it's 65 acres, four kilometers out of town. It's already established out there, and the B.C. Housing can take it over and develop it the way they want. It's four kilometers town, they can, and basically my experience with these drug users and stuff like that is they just want a place in the bush where they can do their thing and be left alone. And any hope of trying to cure them of their disease is, you know, pissing in the wind a little bit, you know? Or I don't wanna say be derogatory about it, but that's the reality of it, you know? And some people do get cured of whatever, right? But the basic fact is, I have a place, I've discussed it with the mayor already here, and available. And I might even be interested in doing some sort of a deal if they're stuck with the lot downtown or whatever like that. But it's been running 10 years, and I haven't had any problems with the neighbors other than a chainsaw once getting stolen, and I paid the guy back for the chainsaw, right? And I haven't stepped on anybody's toes the whole time. Basically, my neighbors were opposed at the beginning, but, you know, they're kind of, it's kind of been okay for the last little while. And I'm just offering that as a solution, so if the mayor is interested in discussing it with me or something like that, or you guys wanna discuss it with yourselves, I'm always open and easy to contact, you know? And that's about all I've gotta say.
Right, Peter. Thank you very much, Mr. Dembski. Our next speaker is Chris Hammett. Chris?
Thank you. My name is Chris Hammett, and I live at 2450 65th Avenue, on the west side of town. I think the city has to stop thinking that they can put a Band-Aid on a problem that we can't fix and that it's gonna sort itself out, it's not going to. I'm totally opposed of any wet facility going in town in either location. I think the 70th Street, Seventieth Avenue location is probably the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life, putting it next to a women's shelter and an affordable housing unit with families. That development that's on 19th Street now that B.C. Housing is currently building was never intended originally to be low-income housing. It was intended to be affordable housing because we had zero vacancy in the community and no inventory of affordable housing, period. We have bigger needs in this community with finding housing for the people that have been displaced by the flood. People that are working here, people that are contributing to the economy here. If we're gonna, if they build their unit on Second Street, it should be absolutely dry facility. It could be for recovering addicts, it could be for people on low income, seniors, people with disabilities. But I don't believe we should have a wet facility in this community at all. I don't think it's gonna serve any purpose, and I don't think it's going to help. I think anybody that's got a criminal record should not be allowed into any of these buildings. We have way too much crime going on within the residential community and the downtown core, and we've got new people coming. One day alone last week, on Tuesday, I saw five new faces. And I know where they're living downtown, but they are new people coming. And you talk to any of the businesses downtown, and they'll tell you the same thing, that they're seeing new faces on a daily basis. We know where the dealers are, we know where they're getting their drugs, and I see them every day. So I don't think that housing them is going to solve the problem. I don't think, we have the capacity in this town to be able to solve this problem. I think we need to learn the lessons from other communities. Look at what's happening in Power River, what's happening in Maple Ridge, Coquitlam, other communities that have spoken up and given us their scenarios of what's been going on and what a disaster it's turned out to. B.C. Housing is nothing but bullies, and I think this council needs to put on their big-boy pants and tell B.C. Housing to take a hike and take their supportive housing unit somewhere else because we don't need it here, we don't want it here, and we don't have the capacity to solve the problem here. If they wanna put in affordable housing and low-income housing, that's a whole other story. But we can't solve the problems that's going on with the crime and the drug addiction in this community without the supportive services, and we're not getting that because they're not working together with mental health. Thanks.
Neil McGregor is our next speaker. Can you name him?
My name's Neil McGregor. I'm at 2185 Bryson Place. I've been in obligation for 20 years, and I am in disagreement with the rezoning. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for their service. I know you have a terrible job, cop job, not terrible job, but it's a job you all wanted. It was a job you all campaigned for, and it was a job you all made commitments and promises for. For us to give you our vote to let you do this job, we expect you to keep those promises and keep those commitments. You're gonna have a lot of written submissions and stuff of safety issues. I agree with every single one of them. This is not a good location safety-wise. The 70th Street housing choice is not B.C. Housing's choice. It is the council's choice. It is council's responsibility that it's being looked at, and it's council's responsibility to squash it. One of the things that, when I was up canvassing with this petition that shocked the heck out of me and my wife was when we went door to door, people thought we were against the 54-unit low-income. When we actually explained to them it was 32-unit low, or supportive housing unit, wet facility, they were all shocked. They didn't know about it. They were shocked, they did not know about it. So as we explained things to them, they wanted to know why they didn't know. I said, "Well, there is some information on the city's webpage. There's also the rezoning ad in the Gazette, and they're gonna have another one." The reaction was normally just a nervous laugh. Then they were in shock at how fast the city was actually trying to run us through, and then there was anger. So much for your guys' promises of transparency. I'd like to also point out the cost to us, taxpayers. The numbers I'm using came from the city and came from the letter of intent with B.C. Housing. The letter of intent also shocked me since it was dated the first of May, weeks before any information came out to us taxpayers. Again, transparency. So $500,000 for infrastructure costs. The city's half is $250,000. This again surprised me as the city has never helped developers with any infrastructure or development costs before. So why with B.C. Housing? The four blocks on Seventy Street, purchase price, I put $79,000. Somebody told me today it was $74,000. I'm not really too sure about that number. The purchase of the Second Street lots, complete with the monies that B.C. Housing has already spent, of $237,000. So costs to the taxpayers are roughly $566,000. There's gonna be interest on top of that, throw 5% out, another $28,000. So we're looking at just shy of $600,000. And that's if you don't have to put a lift station in. You don't put a lift station in, let's throw another $250,000 onto it. So now we're talking $844,000. So at $600,000, just short of $600,000, we're looking at $18,571 per unit. And at the $844,000, we're looking at $26,384 per unit. That's just infrastructure. As taxpayers, we still have to pay for the building with our taxes to the B.C. government. You know, when the city purchased the new ladder truck for the fire department, there was a lot of people complained, but at least the truck gave a service to the community. When water heaters came out, there was no cry, but at least it was a gain for the community. But this $594,000 or $844,000, the lift stations have to be in. This isn't for the citizens of Grand Forks, this is for the province of B.C. Let's get this straight, it's not for Grand Forks, it's for the province. Like, we've been getting tax every year increases, every year. I can't afford anymore, especially when it's not for the city of Grand Forks, it's for the province. They taxed me enough. You know, I could go on and on, I'm not going to. You people have to pick up your minds of what's right for the community. How can you be fiscally responsible to us when you wanna spend $600,000 to a half a million to a million dollars on infrastructure and property buildings that has nothing to do with Grand Forks? Like, nothing, it's provincial. You have to realize that. You're not helping Grand Forks. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. And the next speaker is, I missed your name up here, Gilbert Cunningham? Gilbert.
My name is Gil, I'm Gil Cunningham. I live out on Carson Road, not far from the Mercer. But we do have a business down on Central Avenue. We moved it up due to the flood, and it's actually not far from the warming place of Gilbert, huh? We've had three incidences just because of that in the last six weeks, one of which scared my wife to the point that she had called police. The police couldn't get here, they have enough to do. Banging, crashing on the door, sleeping on the front of the office, okay? Now, I'm not against helping people and sheltering people and feeding people and helping those people because I was there. I've been through road recovery. My number one problem with this whole thing, this property does not offer the proper model for those people to get help. It's not going to do them any good anyhow. All it is is a place, because the Lower Main Line is so overwhelmed, Vancouver, Seattle, San Francisco, this problem in our society is run amok because things that are against the law, the police officers' hands have been tied. They can't take the people off the street, put them into the facilities. They need to go to get cleaned up and go through programs. And they do have some model programs working in the east now, Rhode Island, Maine. I watched over this stuff because I was also involved in helping people in recovery for almost 12 years. Counselor, this is a total wrong model. People who are in recovery need something to do. They need to have a sense of accomplishment to remain there. Sitting around in a building doesn't do it. The property doesn't offer places for gardens and growing things and animals and those types of things that you need for recovery, to get help. It doesn't offer anything like that. Yes, they can get around the methadone problem by having their own facility within the building to offer the meds. And you know what? Most people I've found that have been in drug addiction wanna get better. They don't wanna grow a porch and die. And almost every person in this room has been touched by people in addiction, whether a brother, a sister, a mother, a father, a cousin, somebody gets around the problem. In-town is not going to help the people at all. It needs to be somewheres out of town on a piece of land that might even help itself to sustain itself by having business there where it can help pay for some of its own bills. There are models like that that are formed where people grow things and stuff. And the people in recovery work in those places. But I am totally against this facility where it's going to go because it's not gonna work.
That's all you can say. Thank you. Thank you, Gil.
I'd just like to ask the gentleman a question. Sir?
Yo.
Yo. So you're opposed to it on Seventieth?
Yes.
For your reasons. Would you oppose it on Second for the same reasons?
I would oppose it on anywhere's in town where there is access to wandering around with nothing to do but to get into trouble. It needs to be in a place where people can feel a sense of accomplishment by working and doing things. It has to be like that. They're gonna leave, and you know what? You can't lock those people up in there, and you can't make them stay. And where are they gonna go when you walk out the door? They're gonna come down here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, how's council doing? Okay. Our next speaker is Rich Repel.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Rich.
Good afternoon. My name's Rich Repel, 5415 Almond Gardens Road, Area D. I've done work with community economic development before in large centers where you've got all the support services. Done work with the whole mission. We've provided housing to people. It's worked really good from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. But even in a city of three-quarters of a million people, you can't provide enough support for people from 10:00 at night till 7:00 the next morning. There's just no way a community, a city like Grand Forks, 4,000 people, 4,000 people in the surrounding area, it just doesn't have the infrastructure, the support surfaces, the psych- the psychologists, all the supporting to make sure these people have that support to come out the other end in one piece. It's just continuing the same cycle over and over again. Latest statistics say that mental health and mental illness in Canada is costing full society about $51 billion a year. These are numbers from a talk I was at yesterday. We've gotta do something, or society needs to do something, to not try and isolate people in small communities like this. Maybe the people that have the idea of a business or a farm, I don't know, maybe that'll work. I would try it. But I know that housing people in, like, providing all this really well-intentioned housing without enough support doesn't work. It's just, it just doesn't work. And people have tried and tried and tried, and I'm sure all the intentions here are really great, and I'm sure B.C. Housing's intent is positive, but it doesn't work. It's very proven not to work. Any questions?
Thank you, Rich. The next speaker we have is Cade Barnley.
Barnfield.
Am I mispronouncing that, Cade?
Yes, you are, but that's okay.
Give us the right.
I probably wrote it wrong, then you write that. It's a barn in a field. Okay, I just have one question. What type of facility and how many will it hold? From listening to the people, it's a wet facility. What does that actually mean?
Yeah, I can clarify a couple of things here again, without getting into big debate. The Second Street, Seventieth Avenue is 34 units, one-bedroom. And by wet, they're meaning that it would be low barrier, that people could use substances in their own personal space, in their own home in that facility. Those are the two terms you were looking for.
Okay. And the one on Seventieth, is it, that we're talking about today? How many would that house?
That's the one I'm talking about, this 34.
Oh, okay.
34 one-bedroom units.
Okay. And the one downtown on Second?
The one on Nineteenth Street?
Nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Is 52 low-income family units?
Yeah. And then the other one that that proposing?
Right. The one that we're dealing with in terms of zoning is 34 one-bedroom units. Supported living, long-term, not temporary.
Okay. And they would be able to drink and do drugs and just, that's what a wet facility is.
Yeah. Low barrier is the term used most commonly.
How will it ever be monitored? How would it be monitored? Would there be people, like a?
Staffing, we understand, would be 24-hour staffing. And I think they said two people at once to that 24-hour staffing.
All right. How have you thought of utilizing buildings that already exist, like Broad Acres and the Old Heart of You? I know the Old Heart of You probably needs to be knocked out, but?
Yes, in fact, we have for some years here in the community looked at Boundary Lodge, or not Boundary Lodge, Broad Acres.
Broad Acres, yeah.
Heart of You has been looked at several times. And yeah, we have looked at existing buildings, but none of them seem to be amenable to this kind of service.
Okay. Now, I'm assuming that Broad Acres and Heart of You are no longer paying taxes to, you know, like land taxes and stuff because?
Broad Acres is regional district. Heart of You at this point is under demolition or repairs. I'm not sure what they're doing.
Yeah, okay. And what impact is a facility going to be on things like, on this community? Like, we have very few police officers as it is now. Are they, is the government willing to bring in more police officers? I'm at a triangle garden, so I don't get what a lot of these people have right now, like, being broken into and, you know, lots of problems. I'm fortunate that I don't have to deal with that. But as a senior and being on my own, if I was living in that area, I'd be terrified, you know, I'd be absolutely terrified that someone would be trying to break into my place and if, you know, not many police officers. Is the government going to give us more police officers, do you know?
You know, my speaking to this at this point, at this level, really is getting into debate. We're not a great council.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we're looking more for your opinions on what to do when we can clarify.
No, no. Okay. Well, I am against this proposal, not only for myself, but for my granddaughter and my son, and the people in the community, because with that type of facility going in, I feel that our property assessments or values will go down, and our taxes are still going up. I just had a tax increase, my land tax of $250,000, and last year it was another $200. Now, I know that's B.C. assessment, but no, I don't really want to have this facility in the community. I think it would be a detriment to the community. There'd be more needles, there'd be more beer bottles, there could be, my granddaughter could be walking home from school, and she could get ready, whatever, you know? So, no, I am totally against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Cade.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Rowley Russell, but I believe Rowley's not here. Oh, my God. Welcome, Rowley.
I was hiding behind the pillar.
That new air balloon.
Wow. Thank you, counsel. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm speaking against the proposed relocation, with all due respect to the difficult decisions that you guys have in front of you. I will read out my written submissions, which I've also supplied. In consideration of the principle that residents of City of Grand Forks, that residents of the City of Grand Forks and rural Grand Forks have combined and entangled interests and issues related to housing, as they do for workforce development, recreation, business development, transportation, and many other issues, I take this opportunity to share my personal views on the proposed relocation of the proposed Second Street Supportive Housing project to Seventieth Street. These comments are the views of myself, not provided to the regional district for endorsement, yet through my lens as the local government elected representative, elected to represent approximately 3,200 residents in all directions surrounding the city limits. First, I acknowledge with gratitude that after years and years of identifying our housing needs and discussing the challenges that we have around homelessness and mental health, that the City of Grand Forks has been successful in receiving two housing projects from the province. I urge reconsideration of this proposed relocation and speak against the adoption of the letter of intent it has presented for the following reasons that I believe result in Seventieth Avenue location resulting in material risk of negative social impacts and increased costs concurrent with potentially decreases in positive benefits from the ultimate desired outcomes. I use a collaborative outcome map created by the Capital Regional District for a large metropolitan area of Greater Vancouver to guide my thoughts on the pro-senate interventions that we might take as local government to address the ultimate goal, as stated in that document presumably shared between our two local governments. Communities throughout the region are safe, healthy, vibrant, welcoming, and supporting of people. I feel as though the large cluster of benefits listed therein, the blue circle from that type of community, are more positively impacted by the proposed Second Street location than they are by relocation to the Seventieth Avenue location for the following four reasons. One, embedding supportive housing in the community is key to the success of such projects. The Seventieth Street location appears to locate a cluster of supportive housing projects in one small neighborhood, which does less to embed supportive housing and more to isolate these projects, causing risk of lower community benefits. This is absolutely my primary concern. Number two, as we heard from some of the previous speakers, the cost savings of not having to use these taxes to pay for the assorted costs. Number three, there is value in having construction of a new building in a highly visible lot that is room vacant for some time. Number four, if mobility or other issues prohibit the Seventieth Avenue location from meeting the needs of quote-unquote "housing where it is needed" for the current population currently experiencing homelessness in the downtown area, the issues of community safety and overdose risk may remain higher than if those supportive housing units were in a location closer to the downtown core. In essence, the targeted goals will be less well-met. It is clear the council is set up with no clear, easy decision here, and certainly all options are tied to a great deal of complexity and uncertainty around outcomes. I respect the challenge of the decision, and simply want to contribute my thoughts that there is some additional danger tied to the placement of this project at the Seventieth Avenue location, and that the Second Street location may propose, may prove to be better for the vibrancy and development of our shared community. Regardless, I wish you fortitude for the decision-making process ahead. Sincerely and with respect for the difficult decision in front of you, Rowley Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Our next speaker is Jesse Rikko.
My name is Jesse Rikko, resident of 206868 Avenue, Grand Forks, B.C. I put together some questions, more than a statement. So, number one, I would like to know how much of the cost of infrastructure will be incurred through tax increases for the city residents?
I think that's next to impossible at this point for us to determine in any detail. The financial impact was in the disclosed documents in terms of this development, and there is more detail in the memorandum of understanding. But as far as determining a tax impact, I'm not in a position, nor I do, I believe that management staff is in that position to answer that specifically.
How many people might, or possibly will, be imported from other communities to this, to the Grand Forks?
We are being told by B.C. Housing that this would give preference to flood recovery and to local residents. We are at this point in time at their mercy in terms of how they define the local residents and flood recovery, but that's all the response that we're aware of.
Okay. Who's bright idea was to put it near a women's transition housing and a low-income housing unit?
This option?
Also the Accord Center and baseball dockers.
Right. So this decision was taken by council in a democratic vote?
You guys.
That's right.
Okay. So you guys decided to put it near young families and Accord Center, some areas where local young families will go and try to have good time. What impact will the added people residence pose to Grand Forks as a whole?
Again, a difficult question. I think any increase in our population could have very beneficial effects to the community as far as the slant that you're looking at there. I really am not in a position to comment.
How will we deal with an increased risk to people in the community with our police force as it is, i.e. home invasions, deaths, needles, open drug use, just general danger to the people?
Counsel works with the local RCMP. We have regular meetings and get regular reports back. So we have an ongoing relationship with the RCMP.
That doesn't answer my question, though.
Well, I'm assuming that you realize that we would bring to their attention issues that we discovered in terms of things that are going on. So we're talking about the drug issues. We're talking about sleeping on parks or on the riverfront. We're discussing all those issues with the RCMP.
So I guess my other question that I will have to come up with right now is just, will we be increasing our police force to curtail any possible risks to the people at Grand Forks?
You know, you would have to ask the police about that. We're looking at this point at a promise that they will be up to full staff here within a very short period of time.
Okay. Will this facility be a free injection site?
At this point in time, I think that we're getting into the area of debate. So if you'd like to state some of your personal opinions on this, I think we could carry on. But in terms of answering that question, that's really not fair for me to attempt to try and put words around that.
Okay. My understanding was that I was just going to put together some questions you guys would clarify for me. So if I seem a little bit too far back, sure, reaching for some answers, you'll just have to forgive me.
Well, you know, have to, you know, some of the questions you're asking are part of the debate. And so when you say an injection site, we do have harm reduction going on in our community at various levels around, in various sites. So harm reduction is something I think this council does support.
As a father, I'm concerned about the safety and welfare of my family, as I stated to begin with. I live right across the street from the low-income house, and I'm not against that whatsoever. I think that that's a great idea for people that need to get that step up if they have been flooded out, or they need that kind of support. That's a forward movement, you know, show by the community, and I'd be high that 110%. What I'm not behind is how little thought has been put into the safety of young families in the area, why the unit was put near a women's transition residence, senior citizens, Silver Kettle, and all the other services that are offered to everyone at Grand Forks. Really disappointing.
So can I assume then that you're speaking against the motion to rezon?
I said that motion yesterday. Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rikko. Our next speaker is Pamela Kennedy.
Oh, boy. Mr. Mayor Brian Taylor. Here I am again.
I'm supervised.
I'm supervised. You like that shirt? I wore that one for you, right? Okay. Anyways, I am here today because of the proposal at Seventieth Street and the Second Street. I am opposed to rezoning of, for the Seventieth, Second Street project.
And supportive housing and low-income family units?
No, low-income is good. I love that.
No, I'm just trying to get terminology that we share.
Okay. Low barrier, supportive housing, B.C. housing project.
The 34-bit.
The 34, exactly. I do not believe this should be in our town at all. What I have been witness to, exposed to on a daily basis from the warming center, which I know that they are talking to B.C. Housing every day, and yet they're mandated from them, it is ridiculous. I called 911 again today, Brian Taylor. Are you aware that I had threats put on me just a week ago Sunday? Now, I can say that I caused those problems all by myself because of what I do on Facebook and internet and media, but what happened to that lady down by, below Valley Heights that got repeatedly punched in the face? She didn't say anything. So what is stopping these individuals from attacking me to anyone on the city council or anyone in this community? The no rules, no barriers, allowing drugs is not doing our community any good. It's not doing them any good. You cannot take my safety away and take my mental health away and give it to somebody else. It does not work that way, Brian. What I see today, again, I was called 911 because a lady was smacked. Rocks were thrown violently at each other at the warming center, and this is approximately 12:30 today. Staff members did not stop. But again, staff members did not stop when there were threats put on to me the Sunday night, 11, 10:30 at night. How can you say that 24/7 staffing at the 34 B.C. housing units will help secure or provide safety for the community of Grand Forks anywhere you decide to? provide safety for the community of Grand Forks anywhere you decide to put it? It will not help us. You need to look at these individuals personally, one by one, by building a building. Lay each brick down, look at each individual, and then build them up. You cannot lump some of them into one roof and say, "We fix it by putting a Band-Aid on it." It's not going to work. It's too much on the RCMP. If they did not come, if the RCMP did not come that night and it got more violent, Brian, and I got hurt, would you blame me because I, Pamela Kennedy, have been so vocal on the media sites, warning everyone of their safety and showing the community what it's really like to be right across the street? And now you guys want to put it on the 70th Street, right beside the ballpark, beside the roller skate, by the swimming pool, by all that housing? How many kids ride their bikes? How many senior people, how many women and male adults as well are at stake of their safety? I have watched two individuals that do have mental disabilities at the warming center not better themselves, they actually have deteriorated. They are getting more violent, they're not bettering themselves. I say, they say that I dehumanize these individuals by putting them up on media. I'm not the one that's doing it. They're doing it to themselves and the management of the warming center, and it's mandated through B.C. Housing, so you can't tell me that this is going to be okay. B.C. Housing and what they're doing and what, the harm reduction is not working. There is other ways to do this. We can't keep on bringing in more until we fix the problem that we have, one by one. And hey, please, please, I mean, how many more times do I have to call 911 or be sick to my stomach, Brian? Because I'm watching this every time I come home from work, every time I'm in my yard, every time I have a guest at my house. I'm embarrassed, I'm scared, I get angry, I get violent, I get aggressive, and I want to go over there and stop the fights, but I can't because I don't want to lose my personal clean record. I can't do anything about it. I now put myself on whisper hope, in hopes, to try to do something, but I'm called a hater and I'm dehumanized, and I don't. That's the last thing that I want to do. I didn't spend 10 years of my life trying to help other people being a volunteer. It's not me who hates, but what will happen in this town is more and more people will get more angry and more scared. And how many more women, or even young men, or any man actually? One individual up there, it looks like he definitely has martial arts skills behind him, and if he's higher than a kite, is he going to take that three-foot aluminum pipe to somebody that I watched him flinging rocks at the SUV at? I see everything up there, and I invite everyone in this community to sit in my yard and watch, you have a cup of tea with me, even a cooler, and you watch what I have to watch every day, what I have to witness when I get off of work at 12:00, 1 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning, and be scared and put the keys between my fingers when I walk out of my truck and lock the door because I don't know what's behind my horse trailer. Is it fair to put me in this level of fear this long in order to help somebody else that don't want to help themselves? I say, these guys need the help. Why are you guys doing this to me and now you're recommending doing it to other people in the community by increasing it? When is it going to stop? Fine, I know you want to help these individuals. I'm there for you, but we've got to do it the correct way. Do you guys have any questions for me? Because I sure would love to see you guys in my backyard, have a cup of tea with me, and you watch what's going on. You don't just stop at the warming center for 10 minutes and think that you see what's going on. I want you to see, I want you to see my videos. Go ahead, just watch my videos and see where it goes, read my threads and see how much hate is in my voice. I actually do care, but I'm sick and tired of this. And you know what? I was going to be here at 2 o'clock this afternoon, but I was sick to my stomach, okay? And I was crying because are you, like B.C. Housing, going to buy me out? I've only been in my house less than two years, Brian, and in six months of that, I've been fighting this. Why are you going to do this to other young families? It's not fair. And why would you want to do this to anyone else in this community and bring more people in, crap out of town? And that we can't control, the RCMP can't control, and when they say to me, "Pam, keep on calling the cops, we need to hear about this," and it took them 20 minutes? What happens if I'm getting out of my truck and they decide to attack me like the lady they did down behind, or bottom of Valley Heights? You know, somebody's going to get hurt. I might go down or they might. Then what happens? A perfectly good, hard-working person that's worked at the place for 17 years, owns a profit, pays their taxes, pays their bills, has contributed to this society, and has been a volunteer and given herself to this town remarkably, only to be pushed aside. It's not fair, Brian, it's not. And councilors, Tom, you said it was a good area. It's not a good area. Yeah, it's zoned as a light industrial. There's so many young people, seniors and all that, and the two senior individuals that are used to smile at when they drove past, they don't use Donaldson Drive anymore to go to the rec center or A&amp;W. I don't know how they get to the A&amp;W now, but they do not go past the warming center anymore, and that's what will happen. It'll continue to happen unless you start finding another way to help these individuals, and they do need help. But those two ones that are so loud in this town, they're getting worse, and they will OB, or they're going to die one way, or worse, somebody will attack them, and that's not fair. I hope you hear me, Brian. Please hear this town. Any questions for me? Because I would really like to answer some questions.
Doesn't look like it, Pamela. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Exactly.
Come to my house, guys.
I'll be there for a beer later.
Our next presenter is Cindy Anthony. Good afternoon, Cindy.
Cindy Anthony, I live at 223 Winnipeg Avenue to Grand Forks. That was a very emotional previous speaker, so I'm just calming down a little bit. I'd just like to say that I am opposed to the zoning change for the 70th Street property. The basic reason, as the previous speaker said, is if I was a woman in need of assistance and going to the transition house, or a single mom coming out of a bad relationship with somebody who may have been abusive due to addictions or whatever, and I learned that that person that I'm trying to escape could end up 100 or 200 feet away from me, I would be pretty panicked, and from that perspective, I just, I can't see how you can help those women and those seniors and those single parents and these other people in such close proximity. I also think that if we have policies and bylaws in place to restrict where there can be cannabis sold, then should we not take the same thing into consideration where there's a low barrier for drug use and keep them away from community services and community use areas such as parks and recreation and children's facilities such as schools? But I would also like to be part of a solution and at least offer some hope, or part of a solution. I know other people have suggested different locations, and nobody knows, well, a couple people, but even the owners of this business don't know this, but hopefully that's okay. But there's the Victorian Motel on Highway 3 that I know the owners would like to sell, and it's got 14 comfortable rooms and it's got at least 10 RV sites plus a three-bedroom house, and it's on two acres, and it is away from most residential areas, and I think that might be a more suitable location for something like this because I think with the residents of this community being concerned about the safety of their own houses and properties, it might be more suitable, so that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And that Victorian Motel was proposed to B.C. Housing in the fall of last year.
Okay.
They were not interested.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And the next presenter is Jillian Jones.
Jane.
Jane, sorry. Jillian Jones.
I live on Bryson Place, and no, I don't want this wet facility in my backyard. We already have a new low-income housing, which is fine, so I don't think we can be accused of limbiism. This homeless shelter doesn't fit in Grand Forks. Have you considered how the new residents in the low-income housing will feel when they come here? Parents with children, seniors and the disabled are going to be dismayed when they find out their brand-new apartments are adjacent to a no-barrier homeless facility, not to mention the proximity of this shelter to the transition house, where women and children are already traumatized by their experiences which led them to this place. In the past, several individuals have wanted to develop the four lots in question but were quoted prohibitive development costs for infrastructure. Yet we're led to understand the city has volunteered our tax dollars to the tune of over $500,000 plus the cost of buying back the Second Street lot if this rezoning goes through. Why on earth should the G.F. taxpayer subsidize B.C. housing? We don't have that money, so it'll be another loan with interest added to our already heavy tax burden. And by the way, when did the city think it was a great thing to have, to okay a 60-foot tall building in a residential area? Where does that fit in responsible city planning? You've heard all the arguments against this rezoning. I'm not sure there were any in favor of it other than that it was not Second Street, and you know how the residents at large feel about having a wet facility in the city. We don't need it. We have the warming cooling center, the whispers of home community kitchen for our own homelessness. Our population of 4,000 people can't absorb more homelessness and do anything positive to help them with their addictions. We don't have the necessary services, and our doctors and police are terribly overstretched. The B.C. government has stated we don't want numbered companies used for the purchase of property, yet this seems to be how B.C. Housing purchased the one on Second Street. There are more than enough examples of B.C. Housing bullying tactics throughout the province. Let us be the one who stands up to their dictatorial ways. You were elected to represent us, and we have to trust you to do that. As individuals, the residents can't deal with B.C.H., but you can and must. Please, listen to us and say no to this rezoning application and to a wet facility in our city. I really encourage you to be firm, honest to yourselves, and don't be cowed by these bullies. If this rezoning goes ahead and we have a no-barrier homeless shelter, our city will really be in trouble. Is this the legacy this council wants? B.C. Housing has a quota to fill, but they intend to do it at any cost to any community. They don't care about the negative impact or the outcome of their one-size-fits-all mantra. To them, Grand Forks is a dot on the map with what they believe to be an acquiescent council. Prove they are wrong for all our sakes. I have two requests for you. Firstly, refuse this zoning application, and secondly, inform B.C. Housing they're no longer welcome in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Following that up, we have Mr. Nigel James. He set an awful high bar and seems, you know, being to the point and on topic here.
Is that a hint?
Yes. Not at all, not at all, Mr. James.
Get your stopwatch out. Good afternoon, your worship and councilors. It'll be short. I will not mention specific likes or dislikes concerning these projects, the B.C. housing projects. No doubt you will be receiving many comments from other people. My comments are limited to the law as I see it, the law which we must all obey. The responsibility of all members of council are listed in the Community Charter, Section 115, which states every council member has five responsibilities. The first and probably the most important is to consider the well-being and interest of the municipality and its community. There are also four lesser requirements as well. One of them is attending council meetings. To set the scene, Section 2 of the Community Charter states that citizens of B.C. are best served when B.C. government and the municipal government, i.e. Grand Forks, work together and foster cooperation. In particular, the B.C. government must not assign to Grand Forks additional responsibilities unless there is provision for resources, which have been provided from other sources, presumably the provincial resources. And once again, council members must consider the well-being and interests of the municipality and its community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nigel. All right, we have a gap. Are there any more speakers that are listed that we could?
We'll check and see if there's any speakers, and if not, I can get you caught up on some of the candidates.
I didn't write down because I was just wanting to see what was being said. May I speak?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind filling out one of the forms that is available there so we can keep track of all of the speakers. Thank you, Laura.
Your message was right down.
One and a half left.
Who tells me I'm up?
Okay, can you give us two minutes here, Laura?
I sure can.
Guess you're wondering what you walked into it. Hornets last year.
He was all safe and hair, and I almost got beat up that night.
Are there still people in there? There's still people upstairs?
The fetus working.
What was it? Oh, you're it.
Not sure what happened to ours, but thank you very much.
Thanks for the life.
Sorry.
I had this off.
Not that phone, that must be the other one.
It's not my phone, really.
It's not my phone, really.
Is that your business phone?
Has the last company...
Can we use, oh, we got pulled over.
It wasn't me on it. That's where I get it from.
I want to put out to you with these guys.
You came to the house.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, I saw it on the ten block program.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That's the sound show.
I had a water unusual experience. Which, nevertheless, I haven't been to. So I'm not sure how to get this. But so many places I was going to travel to because of the situation. All the trips are canceled. But anyway, we'll see. Because you have a nasty old reason. And she actually went to the beginning with a sudden wave of water. It's becoming... So I just stuck the water up to the side. And I, you know, I put my... Really, we have one side of the... Pretty much, just, and other things that were... And there's other vehicles coming from all over. And some other things that are getting... Other than the grass for these. And you're trying to use all these people. It's kind of long there.
You're scheduled to...
Yeah, no, we've done an hour and a half or so.
I was finding it asleep. I was singing "Cuckers." Some singing Wednesday from two to three, right?
And all the ferocious events that take place.
Later, I think it occurred.
We have, we have to go till six. Because there's still people here that we extend, potentially, but we are required to be here till six.
Till six, okay.
Yeah, I didn't know if you knew it was there or not. Thank you. Oh, Chris, I'm Jack. There was a situation she told me about. She called Brian. Yeah.
Hopefully, we can finish this pretty nicely. I just want to...
It's stuffy.
It is.
It's toasty, but I don't like it. We could use some wood.
Hey, they're coming back.
You said they're coming back. You heard people second time around?
Not yet, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I think some people know because we advertised it till six. They can come after work.
Well, that's the reason that we...
Welcome, some of the staff. Okay, Laura. Laura Savancov. Welcome.
Good afternoon, and it's still afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I sat here from three o'clock listening to nothing but negative comments and fear and scenarios that are based in fear. This morning, I went on the United Nations website. And the proposals for a hand-up are what this facility is all about. I don't care whether it's on Second Street or in Twenty, Twentieth Street. To me, I am here in support of the unit itself. These people that everybody's frightened of are creation of our society. We have to address those issues. The United Nations and W.H.O., the World Health Organization, recommend these types of facilities. They work. No matter what people think, they do not work. They do work on international-scale research has been done. In Norway, they have, for the last decade, reduced their crime rate by fifty, over fifty percent because they sponsored these types of facilities. These are people with problems. Would you throw a cancer patient out on the street? Well, this is what's happening. These people have addiction problems. Some people, none on the facility is going to be for addicted people. But those that are, they need treatment, not being pushed down and pushed aside. They need our help, not a slap in the face. As well, when we talk wet facilities, how many of you drink in your own homes?
I don't.
I don't either. But how many drink? How many take other forms of, whether medicated, opiates or not, prescriptions or not? So you're living in wet facilities. What's the difference? This is going to be their home, not a temporary shelter. Would you like your right taken away? I don't drink and I don't do drugs, but some people do. The majority of our population drinks alcohol. They enjoy that, drink after work or after dinner. Why would you like your right taken away from you for that? Homelessness is a major problem, not only in Grand Forks, but all over the place. This, not in my backyard. Ignoring the issue is what's perpetuating the issue. Nobody wants to be homeless. Last year, I was homeless. I was very fortunate I found rent. That'd be because of some, a friend. But I had nowhere to go. I had nowhere to live after the flood. And how many people are on the verge of homelessness? At one point, I remember years and years ago, it was three or six months that people could be homeless without income. It's down to three months. Any one of you lose your job within three months, you could be on the street. The homeless do drugs or alcohol to survive. It's their medication. It's a way to cope with life on the street. So I urge you to look at this very carefully. And although whether, I don't like the way B.C. Housing pounces in and tells, dictates, but if, unless we do have somebody saying, "This is what's going to happen," it's always not in my backyard, always. So I urge you not to think in those terms of "not in my backyard," because it is our backyard. It's not, it's our front yard as well. The homeless on our streets are our front yard and our backyard. Thank you for your attention, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you Laura. We have no scheduled speakers at this point? We'll just sit tight for a moment?
So this mayor, I can bring you up to speed on, we've had a couple of submissions electronically. Also, we had a number that have written in. So, it's your pleasure.
Please, go ahead.
You don't have to be there. So several of these are...
I'm Frances Allen. I spoke as the second one to speak, and I have to speak in response to the press lady. I too have worked at Whispers. I've volunteered there. I have, I've volunteered my whole life to helping people. And I know how sad it is when someone who's homeless uses drugs or has any other malfunction in their life. I worked at the Trail Regional Hospital for just under thirty years. I took in nine delinquent teenagers in one area where I lived. I've seen tragedy in my own family and with friends. And, and so I have sympathy for these people. But there's places and help that they need that this community does not have the ability to help in a positive way other than to try to feed them. We try to clothe them through Whispers and to any, any place else in the community that churches have tried to help. So I am not against giving a hand-up instead of pushing them down. But this community does not have the facilities to handle the problems that are proposed to come into here. And the fear is very real. I live right behind where this facility is to be built. I live in constant fear of my life. I was a battered wife and protected by police for many, many months. And I know what that's like as well. I know what it's like to wake up and have somebody's hands around my throat trying to kill me. I know what it's like to drive down a cliff and have my first husband try to throw me out so I would be killed over a cliff. I know what it's like to be homeless and pregnant and walk from Caslow into Nelson hoping I could find shelter. I know all these things. I've experienced them. So when I speak, I do not speak as somebody not in my backyard. I speak from somebody who has experienced the things that you're speaking of and know that this community is kind-hearted as it is. And it's not a place that has the proper facilities, both psychologically or in any kind of medical way to treat these people. I have a son that was burnt to death in an apartment fire caused by somebody who was using drugs because somebody was kind enough to give them a home. I've lived through that. So please, do not think that myself and the people in my community are heartless against the people who do drugs. But I tell you this, and most sincerely, Grand Forks, the beautiful community that we have here is, is not the place for these dear people because we are not, have the adequacy of proper health care for them here. Thank you.
Thank you Frances. All right, and we're back to Kevin, who is going to update us on things that have come in by electronic...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had three, sorry, four emails, and then I've got some written feedback that was submitted, just in the foyer here, people who didn't want to speak, but, but I've written feedback. So by email, it's come in since noon today from Michelle Malat. Dear Mayor, tailor, and council, I am a full-time resident of Grand Forks living on Eighth Street near Central. I cannot attend today's public hearing as I had planned, but wish to express my opposition to the rezoning. The original Second Street location is a better one for housing a vulnerable population nearer to services such as medical offices, Service B.C., pharmacies, the library, thrift store, and the Whispers of Hope Kitchen. I support this effort to give a hand-up to those struggling with addiction and homelessness. Safe shelter is a critical first step on the road to wellness. Ensuring that shelter is correctly located is an important factor as well. Kind regards. From Donna Cleary. Subject: No-Barrier Housing. And the message, "It's not a smart place for it, and I sure don't want it on Second. I want to make it clear that we, my husband and myself, don't want it. We don't want it anywhere. We do not have enough support services for an already struggling community. We just say no." Okay, we've got one from Donna Semenoff. And I will point out that all of these will be added to the, to the minutes, and you'll get a full copy. This one is a little bit lengthy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize it just a little bit. Dear Mayor and council, it is our understanding that today you are collecting information to be considered in making a decision about whether to change the zoning in Seventieth Avenue in order to accommodate a wet housing facility there. We contribute the following for your consideration. Could this new wet housing facility attract more people who are having trouble to Grand Forks? As we are still in flood recovery, so dealing with more problems just makes it more difficult for our community. We do not have drug detox and treatment facilities available and accessible here for when people are ready to let go of their addictions. Drug addicts who don't have detox facilities available when they are ready for them are known to go back to their addictions. Our family and other flood survivors have repeatedly been victims of thievery since the flood and are wanting increased safety for our community. We are wanting the justice system to be examined to see what can be done to discourage thievery and make Grand Forks safer for citizens and their property. There are several comments here that outline considerations that they would like council to consider for both Second Street and Seventieth Avenue. And again, we'll have that in your, in your package for review. This email came from Robert. Does not have a last name or a street address. According to the Gazette, it appears that the fight with the province is over regarding them forcing large homeless shelters in our town. All that is left to decide is where it will be built, Second Street or Seventieth Avenue. Again, the mayor is on the wrong side as a large building in the downtown on Second will wipe out even more of our businesses as being experienced in Vernon. Not only will break-ins and theft rise, but just the appearance of many homeless harassing customers will hurt many businesses. Can't the mayor see that downtown buildings are already half-empty? Seventieth Avenue is the best of two terribly dealt hands. All that is left for us to do is respond at the ballot box during the next elections, both at the municipal level and, of course, show the provincial NDP that we are not children of the province as was suggested in the February thirteenth Gazette. Okay, so that was the ones that were emailed. Doesn't look like we've got anybody still lined up or queued up at this point. So it's your pleasure. I'll continue with the written submissions. There are twelve of them. When we did this forum, we did have a spot at the top where they could indicate whether they were in favor, speaking in favor or against the zoning. And I will advise upfront that all twelve say that they are opposed to.
Can I have the, the name of the last person?
The last email just says Robert, and there's an email address, but no last name and no street address.
Okay, thank you.
And that came in by email this afternoon at 2:22. Like you can jump at the queue there, and then I can pick it up after.
Yep. Abe, you're just in time. You're the next speaker.
Okay. Where do I go? Sit up, sit up front there.
Right here?
Yeah.
My name's Abe Martins. Moved to Grand Forks in nineteen forty-eight. Sweetest place in Canada. About fifty years ago, well, it was a little over fifty years ago, my papa told me, he says, "Go help that fellow out." And so I was to go hunting with him. And when I was going to go hunting with him, I went the night before. He happened to be walking out into the hallway, and he got mauled. I don't know what he drank or what he took. But he came back in, and he was right out of shape. He was pointing a gun at me. Told me to move and to do this and do that. I didn't do nothing at first, but I've been married over fifty years, and I wasn't married yet. So I thought, you know what? This is crazy. I want to at least get married and be married for a little while. So I moved. So I moved. When it was reported, this fellow was sent away. He still deals with me today. So we spend time. Our system has changed. Short time ago, got to work, I'm there early. The fellow's there. He said, "I'm not here to rob from you." I knew right off the bat that's an opposition. If you're telling me that, I don't hundred percent believe you. Because why are you bringing this up? So I just got to work, right? Had a marvelous sleep next to my girlfriend and had a good breakfast, read a little bit in a book, and set my purse, and here I am. I'm very relaxed and having a good day. So I told him, I could see in his eyes. He's hiring a kite. So I said, "Get in the office there, I'm gonna make you a coffee." So he sat down, made him a coffee, and I gotta go out a little bit. I come back in, hear he's in the back room trying to rob me. So I got him back into the chair right next to the coffee machine, and I said, "You gotta have another coffee and think about your ways. The way of the transgressor is horribly, horribly wrong. Your way is no good." I asked him his name. Didn't tell me his name, he lied to me. Asked him other things. Pretty smart, you know? But he wasn't telling me the truth. So a little later, I went out again, and I had a customer there, and he's standing there waiting for his ride, and he went and took this, my battery carrier. And he was gonna crack his head open. The guy was facing the wrong way. He's gonna put a hole in his head with this. I grabbed him, stopped him, told him, "You can't do that." I told him, "You know your way is horribly wrong. You can't be doing this. You're gonna need to change your way." So I made him another coffee, and he pulls out a little package out of his pocket, and he says, "Here, sell this, you're gonna make lots of money." Now, I don't want that damn stuff, but he's had way too much. So I took the package, and a little later, he went out, because I had him three coffees, and he went to the washroom. And out fell a paper out of his pocket. And he was already charged with stealing a vehicle several nights earlier. So I had the right name then, and I'd already phoned the police, so I phoned the police again. They came, and they took him. And I had another customer, because he was there. He said, "Oh, you let him out." So I phoned the police again, because I had this package. I said, "Come here, get this package." I said, "I'm not happy with the way things are." And he said, "Well, the way the system is now, he's mental." Now, I'm a little mental too. So I don't know how you doubt that mentality, but he needed to be put away. Now, if we're gonna be putting people that are ready to put next to where my grandkids and next to where all the other people have their children to the park, we're doing a terrible misjustice of, terrible, terrible misjustice is what I believe. The good Lord tells us, if we hurt a little one, if you hurt a little one, it would be better off if you had a millstone tied around your head and you're thrown into the sea. I think before we need our heads thrown into the sea, we need to have a little bit of, because of the way the system is, because of the way the system is, we're tying the officer's hands. We need to first have a place where we have somebody there that can tell him how hard his life is and how he needs to have his life changed, but to make a place for him to carry on in the muck. You know, when they're telling me that down in certain places of California, they're shipping them out because they're defecating right on the street now. We don't want it to get like that here. We need to somehow find a way that we can help these people. You know? I don't know how we can do it, but I don't think putting him next to my grandchildren is the answer. I can't see it. To me, I think that's, I think you're doing me a misjustice. Because I love my family, and especially my grandkids. If you know, you should see them, how marvelous they are, you know? And I'm spicier than most of the world, because some are fussy on this way, and some are fussy on that way, and some are fussy. I have both salt and pepper. My last two grandkids came from Ethiopia, so if you don't like white, I got black. And if you don't like black, I got white. Whatever you, I got it all, but they're so, so precious, the whole works of them. And already, one of my granddaughters told me one of these Cracker Jacks that was following the kid home from playing ball. And I don't want more around there. It has me scared. And I don't think, you know, I think we all should be scared. I think we all should be scared. Our system is going the wrong way, but I don't think this year I'm for helping people. You know? And there's a lot of times, you know, they got nothing, you do something for them, they're gonna pay you, they don't. But I mean, that's minor. But we have to learn to be, because that person's in such a state, we've gotta try and help one another. And I'm asking that you try and help me a little bit, because I'm already a little bit crackers, and I don't want to go with these others like that. I find that, to me, I find that I'm scared. I'm scared. And I don't think, for my town, it's so beautiful, you know, how come, what's changed over fifty years when we can send someone off and help them? We did it. Why can't we do it now? What we're doing, when we're keeping them here and doing like this, I don't, I can't understand how we can't do a little bit more. One person, and I stopped him from killing him, right in my shop. I moved this. I don't want somebody else grabbing it. You know, I've had other times where there's, it's come close to, but I don't know. I'm a parade for my grandchildren, and I pray that you will help me that way, that I don't have to live in fear. I want to keep living here. I still think Grand Forks is the sweetest place on earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Abe. And Mr. Tyler, James Tyler?
How's it going, everyone?
Welcome.
I'll try not to ramble. I've got some hastily written together notes, so I'm new to this town. I arrived in February via Vancouver, formerly via London, so I've been around a bit, I've seen some things. Just a few thoughts on this. I mean, I'll go out, I'm against this. You know, everyone talks about nimbyism and how this is like the dirtiest word in the world, and everybody's rights. I agree, we've all got rights, but we also need to consider the rights of people that are living around places, children, the elderly, women at the shelter. I mean, you know, quite honestly, those have got potential victims stamped all over them. And one of the things we need to be really, really clear about is by bringing a, which we'll get to in a minute, the, you know, the hard-to-house, which we don't quite know what that means, but this idea of just bringing all these groups together, to me, just seems like you're just stamping victims over people that already need some support, and you're just adding fuel to that fire. This idea of nimbyism, I mean, is it a crime to want to live in a decent neighborhood? Do you feel safe, and you don't feel a victim, and you walk around the streets? You know, I come from East London, I know what rough places are like, you know, I've been around, I know downtown Eastside, I used to work there. And the idea of, you know, nimbyism as being the biggest crime in the world, I get it, you know, these problems are difficult, they're not easy to solve. If they were, we would have solved them, they would have solved them in Vancouver. But I don't think nimbyism should be used as a crime, like that people have paid good money, invested their time and, you know, life and resources into building nice homes, you know? To use that against someone seems a strange argument when, you know, there are really legitimate, serious arguments about the placement of this centre. We couldn't convince people that Second Street was a viable option, you know? But all of a sudden, you know, it can be shifted somewhere else, you know? We couldn't convince anyone that Second Street made sense. You know, it was gonna be a new building, it was gonna be monitored twenty-four hours, it was gonna be, you know, fresh, clean-looking, show some revitalization down there in an area of town, which quite honestly, there's not a lot of life going on. But even then, it was decided that wasn't good, so we just dumped it down on Seventieth, which seems strange. Just a question, you know, with the people that we're talking about, you know, hard-to-house, it seems a big and vague umbrella. I mean, we talked about some of the obvious ones, you know, drink and drug addicts, things like that potentially. Our sex offenders included, for example, because they're hard to house, and they're human, and they have rights as well. But, I mean, are we talking about sex offenders potentially there, or violent criminals potentially? You know? It's just a question, I don't know if anyone can answer that. I did try and watch some of this earlier on from work, I was watching the live feed, and it just seemed like there was as many questions as there are answers to this. You know, is there any additional policing? Is there any additional ambulance services? I used to live just across in downtown Vancouver, across from a, it was a low-income housing, it wasn't a, same kind of thing we're talking there. And I can attest that there were ambulances and police there three times a day, every day, without fail, at least. So again, that would be one of my concerns, is do we have any resources coming? If this is gonna be there, and we've got no choice, and that's just gonna happen, are we resourcing it appropriately with police and ambulance? Because just with the low-income housing that we lived across the road to Vancouver, didn't impact us, we're far enough away, and I didn't really see any major problems with low income, but just with that, which is a totally different section of the community we're talking about, significant increase in ambulance and police and overactivity. And then really, just the final thing is, I mentioned this at the meeting we had a few weeks ago, is I know from experience from my former jobs, who's responsible for cleaning up the associated paraphernalia that would likely seed needles and drug paraphernalia? I know in Vancouver, it becomes a pandemic problem, and there were no, there were no efficient answers. We were supposed to call Vancouver Coastal Health, would be some needles around in parks or in, by the side of buildings. It's really inefficient, because Vancouver Coastal Health is stretched, so you would wait hours for somebody to come pick up one or two. Are we expecting city workers to be collecting needles when they find them? Is the centre itself gonna be responsible for patrolling and collecting needles or any other stuff that we would be concerned about? You know? And who's even running the place? Do we even know exactly who's gonna be in charge of the centre yet? You know, I don't even know, there's an answer to that yet. We've talked about, you know, ifs and buts, and somebody in Colombia does this, I don't even know if we know. Is it gonna be an RFP, whoever bids for it and wins it gets it?
I could answer that one for you, that we have Boundary Family Services that is going to be the providers. We do know that answer.
Okay, and I think I meant to this point, and I think you answered, they do provide mental health and other kind of support, that would be integral to this centre?
A portion of that, yes.
Okay. So yeah, I don't really have any other things to say. I get, you know, I hear all the nimbies and stuff, I just moved here recently, yep, I guess I'm a nibi. I don't want to be treading on broken needles anymore, I don't want to be, you know, I feel like my hands are tied, quite honestly, as well. I'm not really scared by many people, but the problem is, I can't do anything. They start breaking into my garden, if they do damage my garden, what can I do? Hands are tied. I'm not intimidated easily by them, but I think that's the feeling of a lot of the community as well. You know, we start to get gardens broken into potentially. I know it's speculation, I heard earlier, you know, that's fine, if one's entitled to opinion, but I also realize, I know enough about downtown Eastside, I know enough about the culture that knows this, to know that this is not gonna be pretty, and, you know, I think it's a rushed decision. Second Street may be marginally better choice, but either way, I think it's a rushed decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, James. Lull in the action. Time for you to stand up and stretch. Abe, I was just saying, you know, that you should drop that part about sleeping with your girlfriend before you were married, at the beginning of your story, being a Christian man.
I wasn't, I was waiting to, I wanted to get married, that's why.
I thought it was otherwise.
I thought it was the guy with the gun that was making you get married, right?
I was, I wanted to get married sooner, but you wouldn't marry me, because back in the day, you had to be twenty-one to sign on your own. And she says, "You go and pay a long time, boy." So you gotta sign on your own. So I'm still paying, and it's worth every penny.
And your wife's not even in the room.
I took her to Chili here last year for fifty years, so she's been very precious to me. I wish everybody could have a good one, like me. Yeah, words good.
Lucky you.
Bless. Yeah.
I'm gonna have to say me, too.
Good for you.
Just because my wife isn't.
Smart man, smart man.
I don't know, but that's. I think about that one.
I know.
It's the politician in me, I'm trying to cover all the bases.
Good man, good man.
So please, the Chair, I can catch up on some of the.
There are some more?
This is the dozen write-ins that we're collecting in the foyer here today. So at least until we hear that we've got any other speakers queuing up. This was written in by, whether Larry Besplu or Besplu, Mountain Place, writing in opposition to the proposed amendment. He writes, "I am opposed to the placement of hard-to-house, no-barriers housing that is going near the Dick Martlet Park. This is not good for our community, and I don't see how Grand Forks will be the same place it was before. It is because of City Council's view to no-barriers housing that we will be leaving. Our house is currently up for sale, I no longer wish to live here." Harold Walters, 6700 Block of Eighteenth Street, writes in opposition. "What are you people thinking? An entire residential area is being put at risk." Margaret Ornic, 7100 Block of Nineteenth Street, writing in opposition. "I am concerned with the potential cost of this project, i.e. cost of the four lots, cost to buy out B.C. housing, and cost of upgrading to Seventieth Avenue, the cost of upgrading Seventieth Avenue. Also, where is the funds coming from? Also, ongoing costs related to borrowing if needed, cost of park cleaning if needed, and the potential extra security." Tom and Louise, 7700 Block of Eighteenth Street, writing in opposition. "I fail to see how bringing drugies into town will help Grand Forks. It sounds like we have no choice. Legal action against B.C. housing would at least delay or make B.C. housing, to be honest." Louise Bassett, 7700 Block of Eighteenth Street, in opposition. "I do not like the idea of bringing more drug addicts and/or homeless people into Grand Forks, and that is what will happen if there are more housing than what there already We have a written submission from Rich and Rhonda Rappel. Mr. Rappel did speak, so I'll just put the written submission in, and that will go into your minutes package and the summary, which we're working on tomorrow. Rhonda Rappel, writing in opposition. "These homeless are not an asset to this community. Many are from other areas. By making centres for them to do their drugs, you are enabling illicit behaviour. You are not helping anyone. They will never get clean while having, or while being supplied with housing, food, clothes, needles, et cetera. It is a long process to get clean and cannot be done while they are in the presence..." It is a long process to get clean and cannot be done while they are in the presence of others using addicts. No to all of this. We are experiencing higher crime rates, the beautiful..." Handwriting. "Oh, the beautiful River Walk is chock-full of excrement and is unsafe for anyone and their families to walk along the river. We are paying for their drugs and all of their behaviour and I don't need or want to pay. I raised my family. Perhaps it is time they are given some ultimatums. Work for your welfare. To bring these accommodations into this small community is irresponsible and the government's way of kicking the can down the road. Two things seem to be forgotten by most of these government people. One, responsibility. Two, accountability. It is time to stop enabling." Lorena O'Connor on Victoria Road, in opposition. "Please keep Grand Forks safe by not having a hard-to-house project. I have lived here 37 years, raised my kids and worked in healthcare. Beautiful town and people with trust and caring. Please do not mix those who need help with those that are dealing with addiction and criminal behaviours. We need in our town more healthcare, mental health, policing and rehabilitation for those with addictions. I am scared for those residents who cannot defend themselves against those who choose to live against society's rules. I am retired now and for the first time have grave concerns about Grand Forks and my choice and decisions to stay." Lisa Scales, 2000 block of 68th Avenue, in opposition. "I am extremely concerned about the zoning bylaw amendment 2039-a6. I live right across the street from the units and only a block from the new proposed bylaw amendment. Such a public place should not be used to build a no-barriers building. It's a danger to all children, seniors and the public in general. Stop now by not rezoning the land. We don't want or need such a project in Grand Forks. Also, we do not have the means to deal with this project." Barbara Conrad, writing in opposition. "I'm not much good at speaking, but I think we as a city should not allow B.C. housing to do what they are doing to our beautiful peaceful city. We are a small city and we don't need this. I am in favour of truly homeless, not drug addicts. Young people should be working and not just hanging around doing drugs and pester in people and property. Giving people everything is not good. You have to work for what you have and respect others and their property." Eileen Smith on 17th Street, in opposition. "B.C. housing has the taxpaying residents between a rock and a hard place. They have left us no choice but to follow one path of least resistance, but in my opinion, still the wrong path. This year, our taxes went up 25% to $4,000. When we called to question the reasoning, we were told this is what you have to pay to live here and in this location. Okay, fine, but this also means we are paying this cost to deal with issues that are beyond our control and/or comfort zone. Neither 19th Street or Second Street are appropriate areas for the proposed housing structure. We as taxpayers for the city and province should have more say. We moved here a year and a half ago and if this proposed housing goes through, many like us will have no choice but to relocate ourselves. There are so many more risks than rewards to this. Safety, security, aesthetics, tourism, etc. There will no doubt, these will no doubt be highlighted as this goes on if this is to be followed through. There is no denying that homelessness and the needs are there, but there are so many other areas for..." Sorry, I'm going to guess discussion. "It's a known fact that aiding in this way does not work in regards to rehabilitation, etc. Please watch the documentary Seattle is Dying." And the final write-in that I have at the moment from Lyle Bars, 2300 Mountain Place. "I do not understand why city council is spending so much of their time and so much of my or our tax money to satisfy and accommodate a handful of tenants who have been controlling the proceedings of council for over a year, when there are a huge amount of other issues are fair and fine, regular residents need attended to. These individuals would not be put in their normal environment on 72nd Avenue, but it would upset those voters beyond their expectations. Certainly, there is a better area suited for this project. Give us our city back is the majority perception around. And myself, please do the proper thing."
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon.
And again, all of these will go into the minutes package of the official record, which we're hoping to have prepared tomorrow. Thank you.
Everybody knows we have this problem. And I live right close and I don't, for me, I'm not, for me, it's not. I don't, it doesn't bother me for me because I'm old, it don't matter. But for my grandkids and the kids is what I'm terribly concerned about. I don't think, and I don't think, you know, when you phone the police and he says, "My hands are tied. I can't do nothing." When someone almost kills someone on your place. And 50 years ago, we sent him away and had him redone. We need to have somewhere, it's not, I, you're in a horrible spot. I feel sorry for you because they, we're being, we put you in a position where you're supposed to settle something that is impossible in a way. My concern isn't that we do it. We have to do it. But where we do it, you know, I don't think next to the park there is, oh, I'm a fear. But I don't know how you could, like, I wouldn't mind if I knew another spot, but I can't see where anybody's going to be happy.
Nobody's ever happy.
No, but we need to have something else where we can help them, you know? Where there's a place where they can be put. You know, the police says you can't do nothing. You know, when my friend, when we were young and we got bombed, they put him in the clink and they took him out the back and they beat the living crap out of him. And he was black and blue and I didn't even know what happened to him. And I'm calling the police to find out where my buddy is. See, we used to tune him up. Now they say, "You can't do that." It's helped him, you know, and I'm not going to say his name, but he's a real business...
If you're on camera, you'd know that.
Well, that's okay. Well, he was a real business, he is a real businessman in town. And that's what happened. So I think sometimes a little beating is good. Well, he's an excellent businessman now.
Don't let your grandkids hear you.
They know I love them. Whenever they say, "I said, if you know what you want, you tell grandpa, it'll be in the cupboard."
I just have one question. Has it been really truly decided where this facility is going to be?
Absolutely not.
And that's a great point to make.
This is part of our commitment to transparency is that we would go through this public process before any final decision was taken.
And it would be B.C. housing making that decision?
No, it would be us.
You want you?
Oh, thank you.
On this bylaw? On this bylaw, yeah, bylaw. But not on the actual placing of the facility, the final version, final say would be B.C. housing?
No.
No.
But that's the way it works. Council can make suggestions, but it doesn't make the final decision.
Hope B.C. housing has already bought the property downtown.
Yeah.
So we're here till six, otherwise?
That's only another...
Half an hour?
Half an hour, 29 minutes.
There might be a few more people that want to speak. I'm not sure. They're out in the hall talking to the camera. People from Brising Place.
Looks like so many people are filling out some form.
Have to work, probably.
Good afternoon, Lizanne.
Hello.
There's no line up and you're next up at the mic, so at your convenience.
So I'm just going to start, Mayor and Council, by reading the letter that you've probably read already, but I'm hoping that anybody that's watching this at home and hasn't heard it will take some of these points to heart. "To Mayor and Council of Grand Forks, B.C., these are the concerns of the residents of the West End neighbourhood, 19th Street, 70th Avenue area. We would like to bring to your attention that this area of Grand Forks is a unique recreational jewel used by multi-generational residents of Grand Forks. On any given day, you can see children riding their bikes to school, dog walkers of all ages, seniors from Silverkettle and Parkside Villa going for walks, families coming to play ball, soccer players, skateboarders, families utilising the pool and arena, and the new gymnastics club. We fear that by putting the newly proposed no-barriers facility on both four lots at 70th and adjacent to 19th, that you'll be endangering the quality of life and safety of the residents, and most particularly the children from this area. With the new 52 units of low-income housing, which assure to house many new families and children, and the new women's transition house, where women and children will be fleeing from violence and recovering from traumatic situations, it seems short-sighted to be considering the building of a no-barriers facility in such close proximity to vulnerable seniors, young families and children. This is a potential disaster for our community. Grand Forks already has major policing issues and we're currently struggling with the lack of a full police force and a rise in petty crime and drug problems. We feel like the situation will only become more dire as there will undoubtedly be an increase in the number of call-outs. We, the residents, would like to offer an alternative that will be a winning situation for all. We would ask you to please seriously consider taking the four recently purchased lots and use part of the land to build a road in and out of the low-income housing complex and use the remaining land to build a children's playground. There is no other playground within easy walking distance and it would be utilised by the children of the new low-income housing, the apartments on 19th Street, St. Gables, and other families recreating in the area. We also propose that B.C. housing take a look at other options for the location of the no-barriers facility, away from residential neighbourhoods and the children and families that will be affected. Other options could be closer to the services that Anne Howard has said is necessary: mental health, service B.C., doctors' clinics, pharmacies and soup kitchen. If proximity of services is paramount for this project, we don't see the proposed 70th and 19th Street sites fulfilling per mandate. There has been an argument stating that B.C. housing refuses to look at other options. They are looking at these lots rather than Second Street, so they can and should look at other sites. I've heard the Victorian Hotel could potentially be a site, ready to go, 17 units, all set. So a comprehensive impact study on the neighbourhood should also be contemplated before any decision is made. We believe that in the panic to remove this kind of facility from the gateway to our city on Second Street, that not enough thought has been put into this proposal. To have a no-barriers facility in such close proximity to so many families, seniors and young children, the arena, pool, skate park and ballpark, it makes no sense if we consider that the children will be playing in this area. It does make more sense to spend more time determining exactly what Grand Forks needs and we're best to fulfil that need. I think it's called a point-in-time count. A point-in-time count of our homeless population would be a great place to start. And in the meantime, we have the perfect area to create a safe place for current families, new families that will be moving into the low-income housing, children and the seniors that spend time in the area. Again, please consider the children when making your decision, as well as the future of our little town. Respectfully yours."
Thank you very much, Lizanne.
And I've heard a lot of talk about Mayor Taylor wanting to leave a legacy in this town. And I can see the placard now on the park bench, right in that little parket, saying, "The Brian Taylor Community Park." Thank you. I also want to say that in my petitioning over the last week and a half, and I want it known that the petition was not created by anybody in Brising Place or myself, but by two new young people that have moved into the area, that have bought houses and want to stay and raise families, and they are concerned. So I just wanted it to be known that it was these young paramedics who put the petition together. And yeah, there's a lot of fear out there, including myself. And it just distresses me to think that the things that people have left the big city, the amenities that we left behind to come and live in a small town that was safe and wonderful community is potentially in danger. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've got two more write-ins.
Two more write-ins. Go right ahead, Cam.
Okay, from Margo Bailey, 2200 block Selkirk Place, writing in opposition. "I am in opposition to the rezoning. The close proximity of the women's shelter, recreation centre, parks and low-income housing is my reasoning." Another from 2200 block of Selkirk Place, Tom Sporato, writing in opposition. "I do not support the project in both locations. However, caught in between a rock and a hard place and having to choose, I would choose Second Street. Do not let B.C. housing build on 70th Street. I do not support municipal tax dollars funding a provincial project. I pay provincial taxes. Projects like this must be funded 100% by provincial tax, not by municipal taxes. Another option to consider, the building north of the hospital, empty building currently abandoned, should be bought by B.C. housing and upgraded using 100% provincial funding that I pay taxes for. Do not rezone 70th Street."
Thank you. I'm just asking Diane to clarify what council can and cannot talk about after the hearing.
So that is, I worship, just to clarify that council members can't accept any new information after the close of the public hearing. Also, taking note of the system that we have here in five F's that questions of staff by members of council must be asked before the public hearing is closed and not during the debate of the bylaw at the next regular meeting unless for clarification. So no new information, asking about new things has to, can't even be debated at that third meeting. So just to clarify that that kills the process.
And just for some clarification, talking to the planning staff, with the current bylaw we have in front of us, with the definition of support... with the current bylaw we have in front of us, with the definition of supportive housing, I have concerns with the definition, seeing that's in the bylaw currently, we can discuss that with my...
Because it's within that bylaw, so it's the proposed changes that are in there?
I'll leave it a little further, as far as not receiving new information, I would caution myself then, because even in conversations, the topic should not be...
It's a tough one, it's gonna be the one to tell you.
Just, yeah, just being promising.
Okay, so when is that all come off, after the decision agreed?
After the agreement, yeah. So whether you want to call it the administrative justice or whatever, the idea that everybody needs the same information to make the decision.
Marion? Marion Duralia?
Duralia.
Welcome, and you're on.
Thank you. "I am not in support of this location for the development of supportive housing. The decision to consider this location is short-sighted, lacks common sense, and neglects to consider the following: Lack of services provided by qualified professionals within the community to support individuals with addictions and/or mental illness; A very high safety risk for families, children, senior citizens, and the vulnerable residing near Seventieth Avenue; High safety risks to residents and visitors utilizing the Grand Forks Aquatic Center, Skate Park, Jack Goddard Arena, Dick Bartlett Park, James Donaldson Park, and nearby businesses and services; A high safety risk to the women and children utilizing the women's shelter; And an impact to the residents and the community already dealing with flood recovery. Furthermore, I do not support the location on Second Street, as I feel there are other options. It would be beneficial to form a committee of stakeholders to determine the feasibility of any and all future developments due to the direct impact in the community. B.C. Housing represents housing projects. The city needs to represent the citizens and community to ensure that no one will be negatively impacted. B.C. Housing or the city council will not bully our citizens. Sincerely, Marion Duralia, and I'm a lifelong resident of fifty-one years of this community. Thank you."
Thank you, Marion. You're right up this. Gloria? Welcome, Gloria.
My comments regarding this supportive housing complex on Seventieth Avenue, on the Seventieth Avenue site. Provincial government and B.C. Housing should not be dictating to any community the location of this kind of facility. Only if the whole community agrees and wants it, should it go ahead, but not in the middle of a safe residential area, safe and quiet residential area, or even downtown Grand Forks, unless the citizens agree to this. This is not a dictatorship here. B.C. Housing and Mayor Taylor, you have a duty and obligation to listen to and respond favorably to the valid and important concerns of your citizens. Do not do this. Now sell the land to someone else for future development, forget this idea. Very recently, there was a woman threatened and robbed at knife point here. Do we want more of this? Is this what you, mayor and council, want for Grand Forks citizens? We have tried to promote Grand Forks as a safe, beautiful, welcoming community. We are now negating all of that promotional work. Word will get out and we will lose one shape and a travesty. You are committing an awful act, act on and to, to what your community. Listen to Councilor Krug and to your community, which you swore to serve well. We want, you want us to settle down, all right, into our graves.
Thank you, Gloria.
Okay, at the moment, we don't have anybody else registered to speak. And we're just checking email to see if anything else is coming in.
So people do realize that we're not voting on this until the end of June?
Okay.
Right.
Is there anybody in the gallery that wanted to speak and just has not signed up? We also have forums outside if anybody wants to submit a written comment but doesn't feel comfortable speaking before council, that's also an option. Having said that, if we end on schedule at six, no further comments will be received after the mayor closes the hearing. So not to put any pressure on anybody, but if you do want to, you've got twelve minutes.
And I will call three times.
And yes.
Tradition.
You can't receive new information by email, sadly.
Once the public hearing is closed, no further information can be received until... Blackmail cannot be received, and then it will go to the Thursday. So we did have an email come in, it's a pleasure. Input for public hearing, this is from Melissa Shaw. "Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Melissa Shaw and I live 1300 Block 72nd Avenue in Grand Forks. I am a teacher at Purley Elementary and started working there in 2006. I have a concern about the housing developments you are discussing at the hearing today, and I just wanted to alert you to some changes afoot in public education funding that might impact your deliberations. Right now, schools are funded largely according to two calculations: the number of kids enrolled and the number of those kids with special needs, with more funding provided for kids whose needs are greater. But we are hearing rumblings of changes looming as the B.C. Public School Employers Association lobbies to see funding allocated instead on the basis of provincial averages. That would mean that rather than funding my school for precisely the number of children we serve with autism, for example, we would receive the funding calculated according to the average number of kids with autism per school province-wide. The problem with this shift is that for whatever reason, Grand Forks has unusually high numbers of kids with special needs. If I understand correctly, we currently attract and actually need more funding than the provincial average. If the B.C. Public School Employers Association is successful in their lobbying efforts and a new funding formula is legislated, we stand to lose much-needed staff, services, and supports in our schools. This difficulty would be seriously compounded by an influx of new families to our community who bring children with high-level needs to our schools. While we are always delighted to welcome new children to Grand Forks, we also need to make sure we can give them the education they deserve. Research has shown that children who live or have been living in poverty, are exposed to drugs and/or alcohol in the womb, or have experienced trauma in their early years bring significantly higher levels of special needs to school. It worries me that one hand of the provincial government would encourage vulnerable families to relocate to Grand Forks, while another looks to reduce the level of funding in the schools. I hope you can see how these housing developments could significantly impact our community schools, and I hope you are able to make decisions that help us do right by children. Sincerely, Melissa Shaw."
Thank you. Comment on that, too. I think that's an interesting thing that we have not addressed in terms of the low-income family housing.
That has nothing to do with the issue that we're hearing is today.
Not really, but it is novel. I haven't really heard that issue brought up in terms of the school. It's an interesting stretch of something.
They had ads on the radio with respect to the provincial government's negotiations are not fair.
Let's change it, Brian.
Yeah?
Yeah. That was personal.
Don't forget to bring old bread, it's all my job.
Yeah, it's all.
I must commend you, your council, on your patience today.
Well, I'd like to thank the staff for all the work they've done on this.
And staff, too.
Even though we have some technical problems, they put a lot of thought into it.
It'll be under control.
Yeah.
It's very important for me here for the community. And then it helps us make an informed decision.
Silly question, has anyone met our new RCP?
No. Jim Harrison said that he would set up an introduction for me as soon as he could, so...
Is he still here?
I think he's gone now, I think the new sergeant has moved in.
The new sergeant was sitting there for about an hour and a half.
Oh, is that him? Okay, thank you.
His first name is Darrell, I think. Looks like he's getting involved quickly.
Oh, probably not for him either, concerned as well.
It's good for him to hear all the issues and has a minor go out in the hallway.
He lives in Bryson Place.
Yeah, he just moved in then.
Just a little bit of a follow-up on the fact that when somebody had mentioned earlier that these young people should just get jobs. Well, where are the jobs that they're supposed to get? That is also an important aspect of this.
Well, Ron and Sons is always bringing in people from other countries. So is Stewart Brothers.
What's that?
No, they don't pay them less, we have to be prepared to work.
It's not the lack of jobs, I'm just saying, it's the drugs. That's what I'm saying.
I'll help anybody find a job. I'll buy them the clothes.
I'll even hire them.
Can you just walk a little cat?
Five minutes here.
Can anybody tell me they just went on the site that says it's a drug-free zone in some of the communities?
That was very C and P initiative.
Yeah, I think that was through the school grad class. That was actually a school district initiative.
Okay. So, and forgive me if I brought, when I first came to town, I kind of assumed that some parts of the town were drug-free and the other ones were drug-free.
They had to pay for it and do everything.
I believe the, and I could have this at least a little bit wrong, but I believe the intent initially was that if there were charges being laid for something that happened within that area, the sentencing was supposed to be obligated. Now, again, I think that was the intent, whether it ever actually worked that way is questionable.
Sort of on that rest, story of justice thing, is that, or is that fully given?
No, it's fully given.
Do you have another one there, Ken?
We do, yes. This just came in by email to the info mailbox. It's from Kevin Lennox, and it says, "Mr. Mayor, having heard almost one hundred percent of your citizens opposing any form of no-barriers housing, is one of the possible outcomes that this project will be canceled entirely, or is council only going to decide where the no-barriers facility will be located based on this feedback?" Mr. Lennox lives in the 7,000 block of First Street.
And that question certainly, it's speculation if we try to answer it, so... I don't think there's an answer that we can reasonably give to that.
All we're dealing with at this time is the bylaw, public hearing on the bylaw on Seventieth Avenue. So anything else, I would correct to say is not, can't be considered. It's not a package, no.
So what do you mean by that?
We're dealing only with the one specific rezoning for Seventieth. That's all we're dealing with in this public hearing and on the regular meeting on Monday, which I will be participating, I won't be sitting in the chair, but I will be participating via telephone.
There was a Gazette article online that says though if council rejects the zoning amendment, that B.C. Housing will go to Second Street, so I think that's a valid question. And that's been stated.
Yes.
It's not that there's other options, you're saying take A or take B.
We're not saying no.
That's what the article says, city council, right here, I've got it printed if you'd like to see it.
I've probably read it.
If council rejects the zoning amendment, which is what we're here for today, B.C. Housing can go back to Second Street.
Yes, they can, because they own the property.
So I think the best explanation of that is in the memorandum of agreement.
Yeah.
If you read that in detail, you can see that that is what is committed to in there, but also having experienced B.C. Housing before, where we had a plan on the table and they walked away, there is no guarantee we can give you that they will proceed until we're actually at the table with them and make decisions. So I'm gonna call for any further comments from anyone at this public hearing, first call. There's no one outside?
I don't believe so, I'll double check.
Will there still be road access to the housing development off of those lots?
The only access that we've given at this point is for the contractor to cross our property to reach the site. There's been no other formal agreements there. Calling a second time?
No further emails, nobody outside.
Nobody outside. Okay, at six o'clock, calling a third and final time. Hearing done, all this, hearing adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, especially...